Is this working there? Okay. All right, I'd like to call the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for Wednesday, May 14, 2025, to order. So, this is the notice of optioned recess into executive session pursuant to ARS 38-431.02. Notice is hereby given to the members of the commission and to the general public that at this meeting, the commission may vote to go into executive session, which will not be open to the public, for legal advice and discussion with the commission's attorney for legal advice on any item listed on the following agenda pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A3. And can we do roll call now?
Carol Mandino.
Present, finally.
Joshua Maher.
Present.
Christine Sheehy. CJ Lukey.
Present.
Mary Norton.
Present.
Ian Sharp. Megan Weller.
Present.
Thank you.
Okay. For public comment, at this time, any member of the public may address the commission on any subject within our jurisdiction that is not scheduled before the commission today. Due to open meeting laws, the commission cannot discuss or act on items presented during this portion of the agenda. To address the commission on an item that is on the agenda, please wait for me to call for public comment at the time the item is heard. And if we can get approval for the minutes from Wednesday, April 23, I'm sorry, let me go back, is there any public comment? Oh, my gosh. So I hear no public comment, sorry about that. So now, if we can go on to the approval of the minutes from April 23, 2025?
I move to approve the minutes from April 23, 2025.
So Mary Norton moved to approve the minutes, is there a second?
Second.
And that was CJ Lukey that seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The minutes are approved. And then we'll move into general business, and this is discussion on PZ 2500088, which is the Forest Resource Pilot Program. And I'll hand it over to staff.
Thank you so much, Tiffany Yantel, zoning code manager. I apologize because my partner in crime is not here with me. He's been called away to Washington DC to, I don't know, do something much more important than maybe what I'm doing at the moment. Anyway, I promise that he'll be back. That's Neil Chapman with our fire department. He'll be back for the public hearing on this item. But this is a, I'm going to start with the joint presentation we recently gave to council, and then I'm going to run through the specifics of the text amendment and all that it covers for you. So, really what we're going to talk about are what the challenges of our forest resource requirements are today, the intent of the pilot program, what the zoning code text amendment is going to include, the process for being involved in the program, and then stakeholder review. So, frequent low-intensity fire is required for a healthy ponderosa pine ecosystem. These fires do not pose a community-wide threat if the built environment properly considers science-based defensible space and home hardening strategies. The biggest thing is, is that how we've treated our forest and our ponderosa pine ecosystem over time is greatly varied, with varied results. And in some instances, you know, we have areas of unhealthy forests, which then pose greater threat to our urbanized areas. In addition, we want to also pay attention to those urbanized areas to ensure that we can still live with the forest environment, but also not add to anything that would further create an unhealthy system. So, the forest stewardship plans, forest stewardship plans, the simple word for that is forest thinning. So, before we generally do resource protection, the property needs to be thinned and assessed by our fire department. That's always been our procedure, it is part of our code requirements. The formal term for that is a forest stewardship plan. They're generally completed prior to development plans. So, somebody might be interested in rezoning their property. A good example would be NIH's property north of Fort Tuthill. You know, they were able to get a grant and work with the four five, the four forest resource project to get a grant to do the thinning. So, when that thinning was done, it was done absent of what their development proposal was going to be, and so really then planning staff is just then working with what is left after the thinning is completed. And then the fire department is no longer involved once the thinning plan is completed, and then we go into development plans and we're dealing with resources. So, we both have chocolate and the peanut butter. We both want to be involved at both steps of the process essentially, is what we're trying to convey in this. Planning wants to be involved at the earlier level of forest thinning, and the fire department wants to be involved all the way through through the development process. Because we both have very specific things we're trying to achieve. Thinning without consideration of what those final development plans often removes trees that should be retained, enforces the retention of trees that conflict with the desired conditions. That's a more complicated way of sort of saying what I just said. And then the current standards for tree retention in the zoning code are a bit outdated and conflict with best available wildfire risk reduction science. Resource protection standards, purpose and goals, do not prioritize public health, safety, or welfare. So, the intent of the pilot program is to improve that integration of now our more recently adopted 2024 Forest Management Plan and its desired conditions with our resource protection standards. So, protecting the, these include protecting the community from undesirable wildfire by improved mitigation of hazards in the built environment, ensuring the built environment forest sustainable, ensuring built environment forest sustainability by improving long-term forest health, carbon storage, and other natural benefits of the forest, providing improved resource management guidance to the customers we service using modern technology, for example, LiDAR. And then developing new standards for development based on best available science and technologies that can reduce building costs while designing more fire-adapted insurable neighborhoods. This was the transition in our presentation, but the best way to get started is to quit talking and begin doing. So, we've been talking about making modifications to our resource protection standards for a while now. We have done some work with our consultants who are working on sort of the code analysis process, but there is no community that is Flagstaff. So, you know, when you look towards other communities and other codes, you know, we can look at other standards and what other trees are preserved, but there is nobody that is us. So, we know that we have to create this on our own, we need to create our own science. So, what we're hoping to do is to create a pilot program process through the zoning code text amendment, which also will include a revision to our purpose and goals of the resource protection standards. It will add in this limited-term three-year program, and the goal is, at the end of this three-year limited term, that we would be replacing our current forest resource standards with new requirements and new standards. They would be available to both greenfield development sites and infill on existing development sites. So, all, anything that's within the resource protection overlay can participate in this text, in this pilot program. The pilot program is specific to forest resources, so it doesn't touch any other part of the resource protection standards. So, it doesn't change the slope protection standards, and it doesn't change those other highlighted goals or areas within the resource protection standards. The goal is to focus on the preservation of the highest-quality tree resources. It is sort of the goal now of our forest resource protection standards to do that. We're proposing to do it in a different way, what we think would be a better updated way of managing what those highest-value resources are. And it will require a contractual agreement between applicant and the city. You know, where anybody who's wanting to become a part of this program or wanting them to partner with us to achieve specific goals, and the primary goals that we want to achieve are that purpose and the goal statements of the resource protection. So, if a developer comes in and is reluctant to participate in this process and this, in the way with us that this needs to happen, then we can terminate that agreement. And that get, does give staff that ability to terminate if we can't come and that everybody is free to use the code as it currently exists. So, it's just a new layered code on top. So, the process would mean that we're getting, we're hitting this early. Early, early on, we're looking at the trees on any development site long before development plans, our roads, buildings have been laid out or thought out. So, we want to understand where everything is on the site. So, of course, first, they'll have to submit for the permit and an agreement, and that agreement will be completed between the applicant and the planning director. The applicant will need to provide us with imagery for the site that is subject to the approval of staff. So, we're open and flexible, LiDAR is the, is the data source that we're trying to work with, but we're not just limited to that. We're willing to work with other data sources, we're not saying that we know what's best. We do have some imagery on our end that we are also willing to share and provide if, if, if it can be used and if it will be feasible for sites. So, we, it's a partnership in this. What data we have, we're willing to provide for, in these particular instances. And how we work on these sites will really vary whether they're, whether they're small or whether they're large. And so, we'll take very different approaches on how we tackle these. The imagery we're looking for, we want to see representation of tree heights. Right now, our forest resource standards are more based on what we call DBH, or the diameter of a tree at breast height. The diameter, and then basically, we allot points to each tree based on its diameter of breast height. What you can see in the preservation standards now is that we, we want to, we want to preserve trees starting at 18 DBH and above, but 18 is where we start to prioritize. In honesty, 18 is probably a little low in terms of a tree's maturity and it being a high-value tree. So, other better ways of looking at trees and the health of a tree are the tree height. So, we're wanting imagery that's going to give us tree height. We're also going to need to do site assessments because we're going to want to look at the other characteristics of the tree. A lot of times when we're just looking at plans, we don't know if we're looking at a live tree or dead tree, an unhealthy tree, we honestly don't know, and we need to do more site assessments with each one of these to see how this data can work with us in terms of, like, how much of this can we actually do at a desk? And how much do we need to go out into the field and do these site assessments? So, that on-ground verification will be very important. And then, once we've identified what those high-value trees are, we want to work with the development community to try to make the development work within the parameters of those high-value trees. So, again, it's identifying what the high-value resources are first and looking to see how to accommodate the development next. So, our, the goal of this, of this text amendment is to basically better align our forest stewardship plans and our natural resource protection plans to develop and implement them in parallel rather than in sequence, and then develop the revised resource protection standards that can reduce costs while designing more fire-adapted and insurable communities. There's lots of conversation about whether or not how we manage internal trees will help or not help insurance. I might not be the best one for that conversation, and Neil can do a lot better job. So, if you have a lot of questions about homeowners' insurance and the like, I might ask that you wait, or I can work with him to get you those answers specifically, even though I think he, he thinks I can cover it all. And I'm going to pull up, I'm going to go ahead and pull up the text amendment so that we can talk about what these changes are, yeah, question?
Can we do some questions before you?
Totally.
Head into the logistics of the text amendment. I was wondering, like, with regard to the thinning process and the timeframe, and how, how far back does it go? You know, because some properties have been thinned a long time ago, some will they sneak in and, you know, get a thinning before they even come to you? The way they thin, and maybe this would have been a question for Neil, you know, like, I'm witnessing the Southside Airport thinning project, which is a timber sale. So, and then seeing how that looks and works, I've also witnessed, like, the state land piece that Symmetry bought got thinned before they, I believe, purchased it. So, is that thinning technique different for the type of usage, whether it's going to be a timber sale, it'll be developed, or it's just simple US Forest Service health of the forest?
So, the thinning technique that we're going for is going for the best available health of the forest, right? So, it isn't with, the, the thinning in mind isn't with any particular, they're, thinning today is not necessarily about what the future development is going to be. They're trying to come up with what is that overall tree den, now it's based on tree density, right? So, you can like, either look at tree density. They do tree density per acre, they also do basal area density. And basal area density takes into account that DBH, that diameter of breast height over a large area, they have a prism, they look overall throughout the site. I'm not the, the science one on that, so I, I can read to you off of Google what it is, but, but, yes, we know, like, what we have out there is a hot mess to a large degree. We know that there have been properties that were thinned, the, the, there are those two state land pieces that have recently been sold, and both of them had been thinned at some point in time or another. 20 years ago, maybe, 10 years ago, some more recent than others. So, we know in some instances that we're already working with an area that, like, nothing is, like, pristine, perfect, it, nothing's ever been cut or assessed. But even when you look at those, some of those sites today, what we thinned or how we thinned 20 years ago is not necessarily how we would thin today. So, look, going back and looking at those sites and trying to identify where the high-value resources are on those properties and understanding where is the tree density at currently? What should it be to be a healthy forest, which are all identified? It talks about what those tree densities are in our Forest Management Plan. So, it talks about for, like, a large landscape as opposed to a larger or smaller development site. So, we'll be starting with that, and then, but in this case, what we're talking about doing is, so a site maybe that was then 20 years ago that we now know the developer wants to start to, is considering coming in for rezoning or, or doing a large development, our goal is to sit down with them and do this tree inventory with the LiDAR data to understand where the highest-value resources are. There's also very interesting data that is out there that will show us where maybe certain sites are prone to having a wildfire enter their property, especially if they're adjacent to national forest or other surrounds. There's an additional level of data that we might be able to understand better so that we can help work with that developer to say, hey, maybe this is the place to put your detention base in. Like, if a site had to be cleared, this might be the site. And so, in those instances, could it be that we lose some high-value resources? Yes, but we would be Yes, but we would be making decisions based on some other parameters. So in no way, shape or form is this a is this a promise or a goal that every high value resource will be kept on a site. It's where we know where to set open spaces within a development, where to set areas of protection within a development. Where where are those high value resources that can be closer to buildings and are less likely to cause problems? Like the the smaller the trees you have surrounded in a building, the weaker those trees are, the worse it is for that structure. If we have big, high value, dynamic trees or we set aside trees and thin the area appropriately, we can create a system where those trees only become more healthy as time goes on as well, leaving good conditions for homeowners to manage. I know I'm kind of rambling here, so.
I'll add on to that a little bit. So I guess two parts is so the state of a parcel, whether it was then 20 years ago or eight years ago, you're still going to evaluate it not by a percentage that has to be removed. It's by the state of the health of that. You know, everyone, every parcel wants to be healthy is the goal. So like maybe a parcel that's only been thinned six years ago, not much is going to be removed, correct?
For thinning.
And then who gets to decide what does a civil culturist come through? Does I mean, I would hate to think that a developer would get to choose which trees to keep.
So it's gonna be a partnership between planning and the fire department. So we will be working together. So they have the expertise. You know, these are folks that have dealt in forest management quite a lot. Neil has a very significant background in forest management. He did work for the Nature Conservancy, for example. He's he's done a lot of this work. He's done large thinning projects. We have an expertise in our fire department. They're very, very knowledgeable about forest health. And together, the goal is how do we work together? So are we need to teach them about how development works and what its needs are and how we go in and save what those high value trees are. But I mean, the goal is to work with the developer to identify what the high value trees are and then to understand how their development plan can work with preserving those resources.
And even though you're not taking into account slope, would you at least be? I mean officially not taking into account slope. Would you at least be in your mind or in your selection, giving priority to trees that are on slopes?
Well, yes, so right now, we don't count any of the trees that are on slopes right now. Because slope is the higher resource that's preserved. So everything sort of comes in an order floodplain first, slope second, trees third. So right now, part of the issue is is that you don't get any credit for the trees that you save on a slope. Because the slope has to be preserved first. And that's one of the friction and conflicts we hear from developers all of the time.
Aren't you interested in changing that, though? Having, I mean, I know we kind of did an informal poll sort of whether we would be support trees and slopes, you know, double dip counting.
We want to look at this differently. So it isn't, we want to look at the forest resources separately. Like, we want to be able to have our slope resources. And then we want to look at the forest resources separately. So yes, we want to divorce the two. We want to look at forest resources holistically. So if we are saving forest resources on a preserve slope, it works overall towards the benefit of the development. So yes, that's eventually where we're going in terms of a future code amendment. We are requiring if you join the pilot program that your resource plan includes all of the slope data because that's going to be one of the instrumental things that we look at. I think the fire department can also be really helpful in helping a developer set out in terms of slopes where you put different development types, right? So maybe larger lot homes on the top of a slope are a better situation in terms of fire hazard than maybe putting the the higher density on top of the slope kind of a situation. So we'll also be there to help guide a developer through that process so that they can create the most fire resistant community possible. But it again, this is just sort of a learning experience because we all we know, we think we know what's right and best in the moment and just looking at a site. But then you have to understand on top of it what the developer is trying to accomplish and what they need to get through that site and how all of the site, you know, what are whether they're creating lots or creating large blocks of land, how each one of those needs to be served. We honestly, we have a lot to learn in this process, so.
Yeah, there were two things. One, one of the developers commented during the regional plan retreat that, you know, that on especially on these large greenfield properties that are south of the I-40, that there is undevelopable, you know, sections of their property because of topography and slope and all of that. So that's 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 one thing. And then we also, in open spaces, the other night, we had a presentation by Martin in about foots and greenways and wildlife corridors. And it just seems like there there's a marriage there that could happen by, you know, forest and slope and undevelopable property working to the benefit of everybody, you know? How do we get there?
Well, I mean, it's actually, that was one of the feed, one of the places that the cap came out was going in and mapping what are those highly desirable resources? Where do we have that layer on layer? Where it's less desirable for a developer? You know, where is the the good preservation route? I don't know that we have the time to go that route of individually going through and mapping each one of these sites and coming to terms. But at the end of the day, that might be what it is. But at the same time, this, I think that this program is going to be more beneficial for infill sites that developed 20 and 30 years ago under the Resource Protection Program that were not thinned, that honestly have pockets of trees that are not in healthy conditions at all. So keep in mind that while we're going to look at those big sites and yes, the whole intention is to be smart about how we keep resources and to app overlap as many of those things together as possible, right? Where we can keep wildlife corridors. We know wildlife corridors often overlap with floodplains, not always, but they frequently do. We also know slopes are a great other place to keep those tree resources. So our goal is to think much more smartly about this and come out with more strategic standards, something that is more meaningful, that collects that full realm of what we're trying to do, especially in terms of greenfield. But I don't want you to forget that there are these infill sites we're also trying to work with as well.
And I think that was going to be one of my other questions later on is is this really the best applicable program for both greenfield and infill? Or do they need to be treated differently? And maybe by law, we can't treat them differently. I'm not sure, but I just wanted to.
I think we, you know, we might be able to come up with standards for for a site that's already been developed per se. But I, you know, I think it, right now, we treat every zoning category differently, right? If you're in an open space zone, you have, you are only required to preserve 30% of the forest resources. But if you're in a residential zone, you have to keep 50% of your resources. There's a friction there. There's an issue. At some point, we determined 30% was okay for open space and more was necessary for residential. So you can, we know there's an issue and there's a problem. We're so this is what I think the the fire department and what Neil has tried so hard to get through my head is is that I wanted to come to you with the solution in hand. But that would be the wrong approach. Because often what I think in the forefront is not where we get to at the end run. So we want that time to work with these individual sites to explore what it looks like to come up with what these standards are going to be. And honestly, it's going to be a little bit of an adventure. And I am standing in front of you saying you'll need to trust us.
So I understand there's a question online, probably from Josh, and I have a question or comment. So Josh.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Tiffany, thank you for your your presentation. Understanding that this is a pilot. And so there's a lot that we'll sort of figure out through the pilot, which is obviously the purpose. You know, one of the the key things that we hear from developers, right, is the the time to to get through the pipeline. In your estimation, is this something that would ultimately help expedite potential developments? That's the the first part of it. And the second part is, you know, understanding and maybe again, something we'll figure out in the in the process. Does staff currently have capacity? Should the this this pilot ultimately take hold?
So both the fires or fire department and planning staff. So I personally get to team with the planning development managers on their cases with the fire department. Our goal is to is to open our books as we go through this process. I mean, I kind of hit on the stakeholders component. But as we're going through these, we want to show you what we're doing and the why. So that people can come in and look and see how and why we made the decisions we did on these individual sites, what we had to work with, what we ended up keeping. And also get folks comfortable with maybe where we're going, right? So where we're going in code. We may not hit it right on every and every avenue. The idea of engaging stakeholders should not eat up time on the developer's end at all. What I would say is, you know, it's a two way street. It's and as a planner who works on development cases, I always say it's a two way street. We do our best. We have timeframes in which we have to work within. But you know, the but the bigger, the better, the best information that we get upfront and the more willing of an applicant we have to work with us. So if somebody comes into this pilot program and they already have a development plan and they're not willing to move or mitigate or change that development plan, we're probably going to hit longer heads, right? Because that's not what this pilot program is about. We want people who are willing to go down this adventure with us. And there's likely going to be a benefit for them as well as for us in the end. But we we do try everything we can to manage cases and move things along as quickly as possible. But we will continue to always move within our timeframes as required. So with that, I mean, we're going to do the best we have with what we have. Eventually, I think after the first couple of rounds, you know, the planning development managers will, they're not called planning development managers anymore. The the planners will take over and take on this role. So it's it's just something we're going to have to learn and pick up and feel through together. But the parameters are built into the code and the code builds into the purpose statement. You know, the purpose is for the protection of natural resources, floodplains, steep slopes and forests. But it's also to promote public health, safety and welfare. I mean, that is the primary intention of a zoning code anyway. And it's important to add that into the purpose statement. We can do both.
Josh, do you have anything else?
No, that's it. Thank you.
So I'll get to CJ in a minute. But my question, I guess, was, weren't we just talking about on new development sites that we wanted the trees on the perimeter and not on the individual lots? How how does this fit in with that? Because, you know, I'm kind of hearing a mixture of things. So how does that fit in with putting the trees on the perimeter?
So it all depends on what the proposed development is. Large lots can absolutely, the larger the lot, the more trees it could probably accommodate. The smaller the lot, probably the tighter the development, probably the less trees you want around or in close proximity. When you look at the forest management plan, what it starts to talk about is nothing within zero to five feet of the the base of the structure. And that's a pretty good place to end out. Neil comes running into my office the other days like, there are some places now that are saying, you know, some of these big trees, they're okay within the five feet. But I it so it it's it's about what that health of that tree is, what what the size of that tree is, the the conditions in the surround. But it's also going to be about the density of development that you're dealing with. If you're dealing with one acre lots, it's not as big of an issue about keeping the trees off the lots. But if you're dealing with 2,000 square foot lots, yeah, you probably want to get as many of those trees off the lots as possible. So it's going to be a different approach. But again, we're looking at, we're trying to figure out where are the highest resources? What is the right number of those highest resources that we can work to achieve? What that zoning district allows? I mean, so we're trying to, we're trying to hit all of the targets. We're trying to hit, you know, make sure we're meeting our carbon neutrality goals, meeting our housing goals. But we also want to meet the goals of the Natural Resource Protection Standards.
Not 100% certain that answered my question, but just that it would be
So the answer is it depends.
Depends on what the build is.
Right. So it depends on, are we creating a subdivision? Are we creating large lots for multifamily development? I can tell you as a general rule that if you look at the forest management plan, it's going to generally tell you, you don't want much vegetation within that zero to five feet. So that's one of the targets we're going to start with is we we are not going to want many trees within that zero to five feet. And then as you space out from five feet and beyond, the spacing is called out in that forest management plan. So it's it's pretty clear in the forest management plan what we would be looking for on individual lots. You can take that and sort of apply it to larger buildings as well. But that's generally what we're going to be looking at. But as we look at an overall site before the lots are laid out, most of those developments are required to at least come up with 15% common space. A lot of times they have slopes. So we'll be looking at those sites to say, where are those high value trees? Where is it going to make the most sense for you to put your common space area? Where does it make the most space sense to? Like, this is an area that does not have high value trees. This is where you cluster your density.
Okay, thank you. And CJ?
This is more just a comment, so I'm not looking for a response or anything. Because I hadn't really thought about the insurance aspect and trying to create affordable housing. And then if you're having people to have to pay fire insurance, that's really expensive.
People are having their insurance dropped.
So yeah, so I and I don't know. Maybe that's something that I just come into your office to talk to you guys about later because it's very interesting to me. And I hadn't really thought about it before in terms of affordable homes.
Yes.
Mary?
Thank you. So starting with a base of a healthy forest after thinning. And then it's still a 50% retention at this point, not counting tree resources on a slope. We're still working with in those parameters.
Not within the pilot program, no.
Not with it. So that so did the percentage, the percentages are going to change of of what's retained.
Yes, we're not going to be doing a point based on the diameter of breast height of a tree.
So is there a threshold of preservation within the new RPO pilot program?
There is not. Do you want me to go?
Okay, so so I'm going to let you go through that before I ask if there's any public comment because I don't know that if there is online or not.
Let's finish going through the code and setting with the parameters again. Again, the the goal, the purpose and the goal statements are the 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 principle of the pilot program. We need to be in compliance and in conformance with the purpose and the goals.
Can you enlarge that at all?
Sure. So.
Yeah, because I don't think we got that. At least I don't remember getting this.
Oh, fairly sure it was attached. I also attached the forest management plan to my staff summary.
Yeah, I thought, but I didn't see this. Did it? Did we get this? I just guess I didn't click on that one.
So one of the other, as part of another group that the fire department has put us in touch with is a group called Headwaters Economics. They are a nonprofit, nonpartisan group that is funded by the Forest Service. What they do is they help cities with their zoning codes and helping create wildfire resistant communities. So they evaluate codes. They have looked at this. They are in support of the pilot program because they didn't have any perfect best answer for us as well. They're also looking at our landscaping standards right now. Some of this language came from them. So so some of this, like in terms of our purpose and goals and updating them, also basically helped came from their assistance. also basically helped, came from their assistance as well. So Flagstaff has a greater wildfire likelihood than many communities in the United States. Development should be designed to advance wildfire resiliency and to coexist with native habitats and existing natural resources. So we're not getting rid of any of the original purpose here in terms of the resource protection standards. We're just adding into it that there are additional things we would like to consider. In terms of the goals of this section of code, there is no other section of code that has goals in it, quite like this one does. We have updated these to, one, be more consistent with what this code actually does. One of the flaws of our zoning code is that it often will write purpose or introductory statements that say we do a lot of things that the code then itself doesn't do. And that's not fair to the community and that's not fair to staff. Because the code doesn't get us to where we're saying we're going. A perfect example is this limit encroachments into rural flood plains. Previously, the code said, limit encroachments into flood plain, prevent encroachment into flood plains, which we cannot do. We cannot do that. And the only place that this code limits encroachments is in the rural flood plain, which urban and rural is a designation specific to Flagstaff, right? So the goal was, we want to make this more true to what it is that we do. We do not prohibit development in flood plains. We don't. So we're staying with the, the goals really as they were primarily written with some minor changes. Preserve and protect significant natural resources characterized by unusual terrain, unique geological formations and high value native vegetation before, during and after the construction of new development. This is also about, so limit encroachments and rural flood plains. So again, we just trued that up. Manage healthy and sustainable forests to reduce the risk of wildfires initiating urban fires. Prioritize wildfire resilience to ensure neighborhood sites and buildings are designed to be better prepared for the increasing risks of urban fires initiated by wildfires. Enhance air quality, reduce the amount and rate of stormwater runoff, improve stormwater runoff quality and increase the capacity for groundwater discharge. And prioritize the preservation of significant natural resources that maintain wildlife corridors and habitats. And then there's one at the end. Oh, and then enhance the natural environment, visual character and aesthetic qualities of the city for its citizens and visitors enjoyment. So that was there. It did talk about preserving. Enhancing is more of the appropriate term here since this isn't, this code isn't about preserving land. It's about preserving natural resources.
Mary?
I just had a comment on this section before you move on. So when I was reviewing this, you know, except for where the rural flood plain and you use the same word manage for healthy forest, manage healthy forest. Otherwise, the feeling that I got was what used to be preserve, prevent, manage, now kind of became prioritize, limit and enhance, much more loose, much more subjective.
Because that's what the code does. So it doesn't, it doesn't preserve the natural environment. The code currently does not do that. The code preserves natural resources as defined in the code itself. So saying that it takes care of the whole natural environment is more than this code does.
I guess I'm taking issue, I guess, with, I just felt it was looser and more subjective. And I, I wondered if that creates too many unintended consequences and loopholes.
So the point would be the looser is because these aren't the code provisions, right? So these are the subjective introductory standards to the code. So these are not the regulatory elements of the code. When you read it as it says preserve, which you feel closely with, again, you're putting staff at an odds because we are not preserving the aesthetic quality through the adoption of this code. Right? Because in some people's mind, that means no development at all. So our goal is to enhance the aesthetic qualities and enhance the visual character. But we have to work development into the natural environment. That is the whole intention of this code. Trying to say otherwise, I think, doesn't do anybody any favors.
I think I'm okay now with explanation that this is a goal. This is not the actual text of the code. So I'll wait till we get.
Okay. So those are the goals. The Forest Resource Pilot Program, this is just the introductory text. So it's to allow an alternate forest resource preservation methodology utilizing technology innovations to inventory existing resources for both forest stewardship and preservation purposes. So that's thinning as well as our preservation. To implement the Flagstaff Fire Department Forest Management Plan, to determine the effectiveness of the program for future revisions to the Forest Resource Protection Standards. So that's the whole purpose of the pilot program. The program term is for three years, assuming that this is adopted in July. The applicability is all of the properties within the resource protection overlay, regardless of whether they're developed or vacant. This pilot program applies only to forest resources and does not apply to slope resources or other requirements of this division. They are required to complete a forest resource agreement. The applicant is, the director shall enter into a forest resource agreement with the applicant to allow participation in the pilot program. The agreement shall be in the form satisfactory to the city attorney or their designee. The agreement shall be perpetual unless terminated in accordance with the provisions of this section in the agreement. The agreement shall include, but is not limited to, the city's commitment to provide any data that we have, the applicant's responsibility to supplement available city data as determined by the director for the development site, including but not limited to information on tree height, tree density and basal area density calculations. The applicant's commitment to the purpose and goals of the forest management plan, the purpose and goals of this division and the priority for forest resource protection found in Section 105090. That's that section that I referenced right now. It talks about trees over 18 inch DBH. But you'll, if you read this section, Mary, this is also where you'll find that it wants you to overlap forest resources with things like foots trails and other open space areas. It also wants you to look at buffers. So those are, those are still a priority for this program. The applicant's commitment to achieve residential densities that further the goals of the city's 10 year housing plan and carbon neutrality plan. An agreement that no tree work shall occur on the development site prior to the review and approval of the plans by city staff. Permission for the staff and their consultants to access all of the properties. Maintenance of forest resources before, during and after the completion of development. This is one of the things we've also noticed over time is you have apartment complexes that have a little pile of natural resources saved in the back and nobody's maintaining that site. They're not, they're not going in and limbing those trees as necessary. You know, we need to come up with ongoing maintenance requirements that will be in code and applied to these sites over time. Violations and remedies and any other provisions necessary is determined by the city attorney or the director. The agreement shall be approved and executed by the director and applicant prior to allowing us to start on the pilot. The minimum requirements. A comprehensive tree digital or digital tree inventory shall be prepared for the development site that identifies all forest resources, overall tree density and basal area calculations and high value resources for the development site. High value resources include the oldest, largest and most fire resistant trees on a development site. The characteristics used to make this determination vary based on the species of tree, but may include height, shape and bark. The digital tree inventory shall also identify any slope resources that are required to be preserved subject to that code provision. The proposed development plan shall preserve to the greatest extent feasible high value resources as determined by staff from the digital tree inventory and site inspections. So that's the, that's the cap. That's what we're working with. There's not a percentage of the trees. We don't know what that rate percentage is.
Go ahead, Mary.
Okay, so greatest extent feasible. So again, that reads loose to me, but I can see the advantage to properties where there's really no resources, which we've had, we've talked about and have seen come past us. That makes sense. What if there is a property that's very rich in natural resources and larger trees? They would be required to keep all of the ones at a certain height? Or this is where you get into this extent feasible?
Right. So I can't, I could never say to you that every tree, I mean, it, it could be a level of impossibility on the site to preserve maybe. And I've been to sites where I've, I've seen some of the best trees have to go because of the way that the site is laid out and what, like the connections that need to be made from one road to another. And there is no way to avoid. I know Nat would tell me, it's easy to meander roads around trees. It's actually not because there are a lot of engineering specifications for street design. But again, the goal here is to target where we know, as I've seen sites over and over again, as I've started to see this data. And we'll come back next time and we'll try to show you what more of this data looks like. This is just your first round at absorbing all of this. But as you start to look at this data, you do start to see that the high value resources, you can see that they are generally in areas together. It's not like, it's not this hodgepodge of like, there's a great tree over here and there's a great tree over here. There's usually a grouping, a grouping. But then there's also a why sometimes to these trees. We were, we happened to be looking at another site the other day. And what looked like some really great trees, they were big, that they weren't necessarily old because they were sitting in a drainage. And basically they're little water hogs and they got bigger because they had access to water source. It doesn't mean that that's not also a valuable tree either. It is, it will never be possible to save every high value tree. But our goal is of the trees we're saving, we want the majority of them to be the high value trees. Where what we end up with today is hit or miss. A developer lays out their development plan and then they figure out, how do we save these trees? How do we save enough tree points to make this work? And what we end up with are not the trees that make sense for that neighborhood. So we end up with smaller, less fire resilient trees, trees that, you know, if they're nicked during construction or liable to die five years later. We, or if they, you know, there's a whole lot of things that can be fickle to a tree and it won't die immediately. It'll dry five, six years after construction has happened. We see it all the time. So the goal is to put in, is to keep those sturdiest of the trees possible. But not everyone will be preserved. That's why we said to the greatest extent feasible.
I just see conflict potentially between, you know, the development manager of a developer and, and staff trying to figure out how many trees, how many high value trees to save.
Sure.
And if it's ambiguous on how many they have to save, if there is no minimum, you know, where, how does that conflict get resolved between you all?
I mean, the conflict is, is if, if staff is in a disagreement with the developer, they can go back to the original method. Staff has that ability to terminate. If they're not, if the developer's intent is not to meet the purpose and goals of this particular code, then we have the ability to terminate that, that program.
So staff has, each party has the ability to terminate. If you feel like, you know, this isn't, this isn't going well for the goals.
Right.
You're, you want to remove too many high value trees, you're going to have to go back to our original calculations.
Yes.
Okay.
Somewhere in it, I put in, yeah, it's like the applicant's commitment to the purpose and goals and the priority. You know, failure to comply with the purpose, goals and priorities can be caused for terminating the use of the pilot program on the development site. The other thing is, is that this is not about allowing deforestation. We wanted to make, like, it should be abundantly clear. If that's not our intent is to allow deforestation. Deforestation is specifically permanently destroying the forest for the purpose of development. It's clear cutting the site is not what we're doing here. The termination of the, so we built this in because if, for some reason, the code isn't completed and somebody is in this process, how much of the timeframe they have to complete it before this pilot program goes away? So we wanted to make sure we built in a parameter to make that development safe. Because at the end of the day, we may not, we may not change the code permanently. We may try this and it doesn't work.
Yeah, so I just think it's, it's a little bit ambiguous and subjective again. And, you know, preserving, if you'll go down a little bit, the purpose development, no, the other way. Sorry. The, the. I don't know where it went now. I guess go down, go down. No, go. Oh my. Anyhow, it was just ambiguous to say that is determined by staff. And I, I just, you know, staff changes and staff, it just is ambiguous to me to say determined by staff. I don't know how that could be better stated or what staff or how that staff meets if it's, you know, it just. I don't like that.
Okay.
That's just me. Did you want to, were you finished with this or did we need to go through this?
Finished with this.
Is there any other, are there any other questions or comments from commissioners? So Mary?
So when you were evaluating high value resources, that is sort of a threshold, right, for you? I think I would be more comfortable if there was a percentage applied to the high value resources. You know, if certain trees meet, you know, the diameter, the height to be considered, you know, heritage tree, whatever term.
We're trying to stay away from heritage.
I know, there's heritage tree, there's mother trees, there's all kinds of old souls out there.
We ended up, we ended up with high value.
Okay, high value tree. But it'd be really great if there was a threshold of, of at least preserving a certain percentage of high value trees. I was trying to figure out as I read, prepared for this, you know, what's the payoff? What's the incentive for a developer to sign on to this? And now I see that potentially they're going to get to remove more trees than they did before.
Oh.
Depending on the sites.
I'm going to tell you, that's definitely going to be the outcome. Because if you go back through the vast majority of properties that have been through the resource preservation overlay, they have too many trees. I mean, they just do. Residential properties have too many trees right now. Drive through Railroad Springs. Tell me how you feel about it. Would you buy a house in there?
I, I've, I've actually done that sort of thing because I've thought about moving and I feel pretty fire safe where I live right now. However, you know, we've got tree issues there too. But anyway, my point being that I think I would feel more comfortable with a certain percentage set on the preservation of what you determine as.
And I want to get o that comment.
And it took me, it took me a ways to get to this point of, because we are trying to get away from this point value on trees, right? Right now, a 15 point or a 15 diameter at breast height tree is 20 points, which is huge on our scale. So we are tree values and that, so the reason why we stepped away from percentages is because those percentages are so tied to old parameters that we won't be using anymore. And so to really, and, and I, and I'm not, I'm telling you the honest truth. This is a trust us, a trust us to go out and create the science that's going to create the parameter that will make you feel comfortable. It would, it's, it's not, we might, we might tie our hands by setting a standard right now that we don't know is, is part of the problem, right? And it would be, it would be sort of something pulled out of the air because we don't know.
So are you saying during this trial process that that's something that you'll develop? Okay.
Yep.
And I think Josh.
We're going to build the plane while we're flying it. It is 100% that way. And, and I, I know, it's scary. They have, I'm telling you, I have, I'm, I am 100% Cody nerd all day long. But, you know, the more we try to come up with some, the caveats, right? Because I'm very. Because I'm very concerned about it as well. The more it became, we're just going to handcuff ourselves from being able to do what's right on a site. You know, and if it makes you feel comfortable where we come back and show you decisions we've made on a site so that you also as a stakeholder are seeing in real time where we're going with thinning and that, you know, you can weigh in on the conversation. It won't be that you're a decision maker. I mean, staff's still going to be the decision maker because we have to do that so that we can be timely with these developers and these development cases. And we do have specific timeframes that we have to work on, but we can come back and report to you like what it looked like. And we're hoping to be able to show you. We are working on, so we have a consultant right now preparing for you what it's going to look like when all of the, like, what, what it looks like under today's code as, as opposed to what it would look like under healthy forest conditions as adopted in our forest management plan. So you can start to see it. I get that you don't have all of the key pieces to the puzzle yet.
No, and I completely support that, you know, maybe things need to be done differently and calculated different, especially with regard to fire risk. I also am just concerned because there are so many beautiful greenfield sites that will be developed. And granted, they are private property, they are going to be developed, I get it. But we all know and the community knows that it also looks just like the forest, you know? And that's a hot topic and it's kind of near and dear to a lot of people and you know, I don't want to see this backfire. I don't want to see it work.
I don't either, and that's why I'm hoping we're going to get more, a lot more infill properties than we are greenfield. I, I think a lot of those greenfields, they already have development plans and proposals in place. So they're like so much farther along where, I mean, if I could pick and choose, I mean, I have sites in my head I know I want to work with. And they're more internal to the community, they're not large greenfield sites. They're, okay, so the, can I just say it? Pineol and Lone Tree. There's a, a site that's in the HR zone that's been sitting there for 20 odd years. It has an old, old rezoning case on it. They all need to amend that rezoning ordinance. The site's been marked for thinning. I've walked the site for the thinning and have seen where those big trees are. I know exactly where they are. Now, they do already have a concept plan, but I think that they're not so far along because it's only a concept that we could really work with them to preserve those big value trees. And they do end up being along the front of the property. Unfortunately, Lone Tree is going to be widened. So I probably want to put less value on those big trees on Lone Tree because, I mean, why would I put that on that developer to save those when they're likely not going to be saved anyway when the, when the road changes? But I, I hear you when you talk about these big greenfield sites, but just a lot of those ones are, they're already subdividing and they already have like their plats in place and they have big master forest resource plans already in place. I, I'm not, I don't know how many of them will, the one that I would think of would actually be the one that's large would be over by Equestrian Estates. That's the one I would think because they, they don't have really their development plan in place yet. I think we are trying to make it really clear, like we want somebody who's, who's willing to work with us at the early onset. Which I think I've also, was also a point I think you also tried to make to me early on was we need to be in on these tree, this tree preservation earlier, which is a big goal of what we're trying to do.
So I think Commissioner Marr had a comment or a question?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. And, and I just wanted to really just echo, you know, the other commissioners' concerns in terms of, you know, subjectivity and what have you. But I think, you know, just given that this is a pilot and folks can opt in or opt out or what have you, I'm, I'm okay with that sort of ambiguity at this point. But, you know, I know Tiffany, you had mentioned, as, as we're sort of assessing the viability of, of this, this code and this, through this pilot. If we could just get some regular updates in terms of how it's going, you know, how things have worked out, I think that would be really, really helpful ultimately to, to make a recommendation to council. So, thank you so much.
And that's maybe where you can offer us field trips.
Yes, and I do have that field trip and I'm sorry, I got, I got shuffled into doing council ones and now they're having me record it. So they're gonna, because they want to make it more available to the public, so something people can tap into online. But I know you two have asked for it and so, you know, I will follow up with you guys after this shortly and see if that, even before the public hearing, if that's something you want to go and do. Okay, I'll, I'll throw it out to everybody on who wants to go. I just need less than a quorum.
Commissioner Lucky, did you have a comment? Okay. So I know we have a comment from the public, from my good friend Nat White. If you'd like to come up and please state your name and your address for the record.
He's my absolute fan club member on this.
Nat White, 1120 North Rock Ridge. Appreciate you all serving on the commission, planning zoning commission, I think is one of the most important ones. And, and the good thoughtful discussion that just went on is an example of you doing it well. Thank you. I just want to give a, a high level comment, preface it by saying that I'm not against trying to figure out better ways to do anything. But before the resource protection overlay went in, there are several developments that people really want to live in, even though they're tree covered. One is Westridge University Heights Continental went in before that. And then outside of our resource protection is the locket, Trust Land, North Buffalo Park. All of those were developed in the forest. And then as I've shown many people over the times, the photographs I have of the development of the West Walmart area. And that happened over a period from roughly 88, 87 to 89. And why it took so long is it was clear cut, as you were saying. It was totally clear cut, but not only totally clear cut, but ground flat. And it was that outcry, both within the city staff and the community, that the resource protection overlay came in. And so the whole idea of that was to encourage building flagstaff within the forest and not on top of it. This is as simple as that. And it may have been crude to start with because it was the first one and very, and it has been adjusted, but over the years, 35 years, in some ways it's been successful, in some ways it hasn't. I mean, you have ponderosa trails. I think that's fairly successful under, under this. And as I mentioned, well, with some of the other, oh, Equestrian Estates is another one that, that came under the, the resource protection overlay. So it worked in some cases and it didn't, didn't work in others. And a lot of it had to do with the developer, whether the developers decided the resource protection overlay is a challenge, it's in my way. I'm going to do what I can and try to fit it in and make it work. And we have examples of that and you share them. And, but there were other developers that came in and said, okay, this is part of my responsibility of developing in flagstaff. And they were able to work with it and get it done. So I guess my point is the resource protection overlay is in a very important part of making and has made flagstaff what it is. And we need to keep that theme, I think, involved. That flagstaff is part of our environment, part of our forest environment and not on top of it. That, that the environment and the trees should not be considered this versus dense housing. It should be integrated together. And I think I'm hearing that that's trying, that approach, that, that theme, that, that goal is, is trying to be met using maybe less crude and better tools to do the job. So, but I really appreciate your questions. They were very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Nat. I think Nat's lived here longer than me. I've been here 50 years, so. How much? Okay, six years longer than me. No, he wasn't. You can tell by his accent. Have you, have you heard him give the lecture of the Hovs moon? Anyhow. So, Nat, what's a Hovs moon? Okay. Anyhow, you know, when I first moved here, you came into town, you saw these trees. I think that, that was evidenced by comments that people had about the hospital development as well. That, you know, the hospital was just going to be this huge structure that you were going to come into town. You weren't going to see trees anymore and that happened at Walmart. That happened where Target is. Where Target was, that, when I first moved here, that was Reardon's property and you couldn't see NAU because of the trees. So, I mean, I, I think both Nat and I have seen different things. My property sits in the forest, basically. And as I walk through my neighborhood, you know, there's, it's a high risk for forest fires. I mean, we've watched them all around us. So, you know, last summer, we, we did some, we had someone come over and cut our trees away from the house and, you know, we didn't cut down any trees, but we had them so that they, the canopies weren't near the roof and near the structure. But it, you know, as the years have gone by and we've been lucky, knock on wood, that we haven't been involved in a fire, but we, we could sit on our deck and we can see the fire, you know, fires around us. You know, you know, for the personal safety and protection of the community, I'm hoping this is a good idea. And at the other end, I don't want to see flagstaff. The only word that can come to me is raped of all its, you know, ponderosa pine beauty. You know, and I, I, we, my husband and I, we, we took a little trip to our older house that we used to own a long time ago to look at some of the trees there because we were trying to assess whether or not we wanted to put a tree in our backyard. So where I went over to Smoke Rise, and if you go out to Smoke Rise, there's no, I, I don't think there's a lot of ponderosa pines there. But across the way, you go over to Christmas Tree and there's ponderosa pine. So I don't know if that was just clear cut. That development was here before me, I believe, Smoke Rise. But, you know, you can see, it's just across the highway. And it's two different developments and they're very, very different. So I just, you know, hope that we keep the value of what we have in the community by doing this trial.
Right, I, let me just say this. I think the hard part for all of us, right, is some people see a value where the, it's not a healthy forest, right? So some people think that an unhealthy forest is a beautiful forest because that, that's what they know and that's what they see, right? As I drive up at I-17 and I look through those dense thickets of trees, I think, oh, good gosh, and we have some of that in town. And we have some of that on dense properties. What, we know how important our forests are to our environment and the aesthetic quality. You know, in no way, shape or form would this be allowing mass grading. Because again, the slope preservation stays the same, which, you know, that's why you have both slope and forest resource protection. Slops being that highest, that higher priority resource, we will not be allowing mass grading. We are trying to make it clear that this is not about deforestation. This is not like, oh yay, developers have a free for all and city staff's got to fight with the developer. You know, because I think most developers are also going to want to see real changes made to the forest resource standards. And if we aren't able to produce something that is meaningful and that represents the purpose and goals of these provisions and what it is you're looking for, then we know that the code's not going to end up being amended. So everybody does have something to, to lose or gain out of this pilot program.
And, and we know we've had unscrupulous developers in the past.
And unscrupulous planners. I'm crazy all day long. I'm just kidding.
Who have, I mean, you know, I'm looking at Nat, who knows what I'm talking about over by Olive Garden and, you know, where somebody came in and.
It happens.
Didn't cut their trees down, but cut them enough that they died.
Yeah, and there's lots of crazy weird things that people can do to trees. And there are lots of things that happen on the one off on trees all of the time. There are also all of the homeowners that end up with trees that will call and scream and yell at us because they can't cut their tree down. It's pretty, it's, sometimes it's an interesting conversation because homeowners don't always know what they're getting into when they buy a house and with those tree requirements as well. It's, you know, it's, it's such an interesting conversation. Where you and I live, we're not in the resource protection overlay. And there are a lot of areas that are not in the resource protection overlay that were not clear cut, that were not mass graded. So we need to find that middle ground is all that, and we're just asking you to go on this magical, magical journey with us to help us figure it out. And, you know, we'll, we'll definitely get back to what those right calculations are, but we have a lot to learn about tree densities and how to calculate basal density and how to convey that information to the public and what that can look like.
Oh, so the, the scary part to me is what happens after, you know, a year of this trial and we're like, ooh, this is not good. Can we end the trial early or?
We could end the trial early. I mean, we could amend the code to terminate the trial. We would need to give people this provision about the termination. Code can always be changed.
Okay, thank you. And Mary?
Did you consult with any of the local developers as you developed this? Or do you have any interested parties at this time?
We didn't actually consult with too many developers. This is really the brainchild of the fire department and the planning department. We have consulted with a local, their local consultant. They developed this software and this program that some of the developers have tapped into for some of their resource protection plans. They map forests using LiDAR data and they created this data working with the Forest Service. So we have them working on some prototype models to show you all. I'm hoping there will be something to show you in the next round of this conversation. But, so they've worked with developers, right, as, as, as a consultant, knowing what should be kept. They, they, their expertise is forest protection and they look at our standards and they go, what is this? This, what, this is very confining. What are the, like, what are, what is it that you're trying to do? And, and they can show you visually through mapping how our regulations look as opposed to maybe what it should be and what that. And we're trying to come out with numbers of what that tree density looks like after we allow development. But tree density will vary based on the type of development is. So again, whether we need to vary the amount of resources maybe by zoning district, I don't know. And by, by density, right? There may be, instead of just saying all residential is this and all open space is this and all commercial is this. I mean, it's funny, right? The, the properties that, that triggered it had the lower preservation rate than, than maybe the, than the properties that haven't, that didn't trigger. It wasn't residential development that was triggering this. It was commercial. And we gave them that lower preservation rate than we did residential. We're just at a different place and time and we need to think about it differently is what it comes down to. But we do, I, I'm hoping to bring in commercial development to this. But we do, I, I'm hoping to bring in commercial development to this as well. And so not for it to just be residential. We want to get the whole parameter.
So the, the local developers that own land or whether they, excuse me, have a development application in or not, or intended, intend to put one in in the future, they're not in, they're not really aware of how this is evolving at this point or have been offered it or?
I think people are paying attention.
Okay.
I, I mean, I know there's one property I want to target. But I, we have talked to one developer recently after the city council presentation that just was wondering about the what ifs this would look like. And so we did sit and talk with him. We talked to another, like an apartment complex owner, just asking like, what's the timeframe? What could this look like for our site? We already went, you know, we were part of the resource protection overlay. This is what our site looks like. This is what we want to do. This is what we were thinking about in terms of the trees. And we explained that, you know, it could be different than what, how they've already sort of laid it out, that kind of thing. Just trying to give people the parameters of what it is. I mean, it, we haven't made it ea- easy either on our end. But we want to, we want projects that are going to come in and really show you what the new standards can actually be and deliver for the community.
Yes, I'm just, and I'm also wondering, like, knowing how far in advance, you know, developers start working, you know, when they own a piece of property, what they have intended and how many units they intend to get out of it. Are they, are you able to get in there soon enough? Or do they know to call you soon enough?
Yeah, I mean, yes. I mean, there are some where the plans are just conceptual. You know, if somebody's come in and done a concept plan, conceptual plans are just that, right? You haven't done full engineering. You, you've spent a hundred and ninety dollars on your application. It isn't huge. But it also gives us a good indication of what people want to do, especially, I mean, the site I'm kind of drilling on is, is the one I know it's already been thinned or not thinned, but marked for thinning. So, you know, there's, there's already like one level of assessment. And then it let me walk through that property and think, okay, so would I agree with this thinning plan? Would I, you know, how this development plan works out? And luckily, I mean, I did have what their idea of their concept plan was and how that would work out on this site. I, you know, I think it's, it's workable. But I mean, how they were going to save all of their resources is just do their development and plop their resources, right? That's what they all do. Is there a better way to do it? Yeah, I think we can talk them into it, maybe. I mean, and I think the outcome could be better. So maybe they save a fewer, less trees, but we get better quality trees in a better location that had more aesthetic value to that property than saving them in a clump in the back.
Can you think of any unintended consequences?
Oh, a hundred, a hundred.
No, I don't like to hear that.
A thousand and fifty-one. I mean, it's this, we might make a mistake. But we, but what do we, I mean, what do we have to lose on a couple of properties at this point? I mean, we're not going, again, we're not clear cutting ever. You might not agree with what gets saved, I guess, in the end. And then we decide that this was an experiment that was, that's gone awry and wrong. And that's not what we want. And then we know.
Okay. Thank you. And Tiffany, that, thank you for, I know how much work and effort goes into this. And, you know, we always hit you with a lot of questions.
I love this. I a hundred percent love you and love this. You're just as about as good as Christina Rubicava. Which I have to run the gauntlet with her as well. So, and she makes this a hundred times better after she's, you know, run me through the gauntlet. But this is great. I mean, this is, this is exactly what we need to make this a better project. We're trying to be very transparent about what we're doing. I, I'm not going to hide the fact that we don't, we don't have a hard number that we're going to maintain.
Right. So unless there's any other, yes, CJ?
Just the one last comment I would make is about enforcement because you have mentioned where there have been people that have tried to cut before they tell you anything's going on. And, and I know we didn't get to the enforcement part, but I would just hit them as hard as we could.
We, I have, just so you know. And I've cried too, which is also really mean. I'm an ugly crier, but it's, it's upwards of a thousand to twelve hundred dollars a tree. So, it's a pretty good fine.
What, Nat, what, do you remember what happened to the gentleman who cut all the trees over there by Olive Garden? Yes. Well, but did he go to jail before he died? Oh, and was he fined? The knackers.
Oh, and I believe they were fined. There were penalties.
Yeah, I hope so because.
I was here during.
I hope that the fines were more than what he made on that project, but I doubt it. I doubt it.
You mean what he sold it for? Because he sold it to a developer?
Yeah, but anyhow.
Well, wouldn't it be better though that nobody would ever be tempted to do that because we had such a reasonable process to go through that you could still achieve the development you want on your site and we can preserve the resources? I mean, that's the positive way to think about it. I'm going to show up every day and just be positive about it.
Okay, thank you. Hearing no other comments or questions, I want to thank Tiffany for her presentation and for answering all our questions.
We're trying.
And we'll move on to, do we, do I need to state what the next dates will be? Or that's just in here in the agenda?
The public hearing on this item for Planning and Zoning Commission is May twenty-eighth, two weeks.
Okay. So are there, is there any miscellaneous items to and from councilmen, or council, commission members? Mary?
I'll just say that JW Powell's specific plan open house is happening at five thirty to seven thirty over at the Aquaplex. I'm running over there after this. So if anybody else is interested in learning about that area, that there are bound, bound to be cases coming our way in that region. Just putting the info out there.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, then we are adjourned at five thirty-two. Thank you.